Good evening and welcome to the March tenth City Council meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order. First, I would like to do introductions. To my far left is our interim city attorney, Ms. Cara Silver. To her right is our city manager, Stella Jerome Robinson. To my immediate left is council member Kat Carlton. To my immediate right is council member Betsy Nash, and to her right is council member Ray Mueller. And to his right is our city clerk, Ms. Judy Heron. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda are presentations and proclamations. My community youth poster exhibition was held at the main library. The next item, a two Facebook community benefits update will be continued to a future meeting. Next is item B one, study session on city council policies and procedures. To introduce our presentation will be our assistant city manager, Nick Pegaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Good evening. Nick Pegaro is assistant city manager. I just wanted to take this moment and study session to go over some areas of the city council's procedures manual that the council may have interest in changing. Just by way of a little background on this particular project, in July or so of 2019, the council formed an ad hoc subcommittee, then Mayor Mueller and council member Carlton. The committee was able to review and subsequently recommend replacement of procedures for the roles and responsibilities of the city council. And the intent was to move forward after that point. I believe that was adopted in October. The intent was to move forward and go through the city council's existing procedures manual by chapter to identify updates that would either reflect the desire of the current council or bring the procedures manual into line with the city's current practice. Unfortunately, due to a number of competing priorities, this project has not moved as quickly as I would have liked. The subcommittee has been very supportive in providing feedback when asked. However, I have not had the opportunity to make substantive recommendations to them since the first procedure that came before the council in September and then was approved in October. One of the reasons for that is that these aren't my policies and procedures to rewrite, and it makes it very difficult for me to discern which issues the council may desire to have more fully explored. So the purpose of this call sitting session this evening is to focus on a couple of areas of the procedures manual that with the council's discussion and guidance will help inform staff in preparing a revision to those specific chapters. And then I can work with, or we can work with the subcommittee to hash out any details that may be critical prior to coming back to the city council for approval, review and approval. So with that, I'm going to go through, I will talk a bit about, the focus of tonight's evening, of tonight's session are the council's policies related to communications and meetings. So what I've done is I've gone through our current policy, identified the topic, and then tried my best in a very brief manner to capture the essence of the policy that is in the procedure manual. So I don't know the best way to go through this, but perhaps we can just start with, in the existing council procedure. The first topic discussed, our council member is council member correspondence. The current policy says that the mayor is charged with transmitting the city's position, which is established by a majority of the city council. If there is no council position, or it's a matter the council has not taken a position on, city council members are not allowed to use official city's letterhead to communicate their position because it does not reflect the position of the city council. And they need to clarify in their communication that while they may be an individual member of the city council, they are not speaking on behalf of the city. Additionally, the current policy allows individual council members to write letters of recommendation and support for constituents who may request, and that's permissible. That does not have to be reviewed by the full city council. So before I move on from this particular point, is there a desire by the council to make any substantive changes to this particular topic of the procedure? If I may put it back to the mayor for that.
Does anyone on council want to make any additions or changes?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Very good. The next section of the council procedures is chaptered, "Speaking for the city." So this is in a situation where an individual council member is expressing the position of the city on a matter. The procedure requires that all city council members provide the position of the city council. They can state whether they agree or disagree, but they must explain the position of the city council. The intent here clearly is to accept that the decision of the majority of the council is the city's official policy. Council members may, however, clarify their vote on an issue. So if it's not a unanimous vote, a council member who is in the dissent may say, "I voted no for these reasons." However, the city's policy, official policy is something contrary to why, that's why I voted no. Speaking for the city also designates the mayor as the sole contact for the media. All requests from media should be directed to the mayor, and the mayor may then ask either the city manager or department heads to make response. This particular topic should apply, or does apply to our advisory body members. So I think this is one of those touchy areas where the media may call one of our commissioners or committee members and ask for their perspective, and the commissioner or committee member says, "I'm speaking on behalf of myself," but nonetheless, the media could say that Menlo Park city, or Menlo Park Commissioner X said this, speaking on behalf of himself. And so it's sort of a gray area, whether that's something that the council would want to be apprised of, if that's accepted behavior. We, folks do have First Amendment rights. However, there is a significant cachet representing yourself as an official of the city, whether it be a staff member, council member, or commissioner. So with that, I would ask for any comments or changes from council.
Council member Nash, I think, has a comment.
So I don't know how this works in with this, but I've been in the position recently of being at a board meeting and actually having a roll call vote, not having had any correspondence with the city, not actually knowing. Anyway, there was no preparation beforehand. And also, when Mayor Taylor and I were part of the Stanford GUP subcommittee, we were often called upon to make public comment. And so I'm just wondering, in my experience, there's often times when you are speaking somewhat on behalf of the city, and there is no opportunity to even clarify positions beforehand. So I don't know how that works with this.
Typically, the body that you participate on should do their best to give you advice, advance notice of any policy or recommendations that they're requesting on behalf of the city, in which case it would come to the city council. Unfortunately, the way that that works is there isn't always enough time between the notice of the meeting and the syncing with the city council meeting in order to get that item brought forward. I would ask perhaps the council members who have been on the council for a little longer to share their experience, because I think this is a very important question.
In my experience, you just say transparently, I haven't had an opportunity to talk about this yet with my city council, but my opinion as a city council member is this.
Right. There's a, I'd say kind of an honor code in the sense that you are put forward, we are put forward on these different boards as intelligent individuals to be able to make decisions. And sometimes they are bigger decisions where you say, and usually, as soon as one person says it, the other city council members will as well. You know, this is actually a big deal. This is actually a lot of money. This is actually something I'd like to take back. And you read your packet days ahead of time. You know it's coming. So you can call them ahead of time and say, warn staff, like we warn our own staff, I'm going to have a problem with this, just to let you know. And then they can actually sometimes call around and see if they want to pull it. And sometimes we do need to bring things back, and that's fine. But on a lot of these, there's a lot of decisions that you are put on that board as an intelligent individual to move forward. So to date, I don't think it's been an issue. But it's not uncommon for larger things to have the people on, whether it's the SBWMA that picks up the trash, or the creek, or something like that, to say, "Oh, you want us to give X many millions of dollars?" Right. I need the information, and they bring it over, and staff does a full hearing of it.
So I guess two comments. One is, I actually did not feel uncomfortable making the comments. It's just looking at the policy. Certainly, we did not have a full council backing for the comments that were made. The other piece is, at the time when I had to do a roll call vote, it was actually voting as an alternate and had not had a chance to review the materials before. So perhaps one of the pieces that we want at some place in the policies and procedures is if you call upon an alternate, that you actually provide some sort of background information for the person prior to going to the meeting. Thank you.
For things like the creek, it was complicated enough to where I went to almost all the meetings, kind of like you're doing with the Peninsula Clean Energy, because there are a lot of moving parts to some of these boards where the alternate, you know, you do work together more closely as you move through for that reason.
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Very good. So the subcommittee may consider, the subcommittee may consider providing clarifying language to the extent that it's appropriate, and both council members have expressed their perspective. The next item in council communications is on the topic of state legislation and propositions. So these are, this is, we, the city's standard practice is to rely on the League of California Cities and CCAG to monitor legislation and to advise the city if there are any items of significant concern that may impact us, either through, as most recently, the housing, changes in housing laws during difficult economic times. Oftentimes, there may be legislation that would impact city finances. Unless, the policy provides that unless the city council has taken a policy or a vote and established a legislative platform on the particular issue, that a new issue may require, may require that staff conduct analysis and that the council discuss that analysis before the city council takes a position. So on this particular note, the key sort of policy question for the council is how active do you want to be, or how active would you like to be in monitoring and responding to state legislation and propositions, because this would be the opportunity to provide that clarity.
Is there a way to tie the state legislation and the propositions to our goals? And if something comes up that's related to one of our goals or priorities, then we would make sure that we would have a response or a letter?
Through to chair. Yes. If I may, I think one of the challenges that we have experienced over the last several years is that legislation changes so rapidly, it dies, it gets gutted and revised. And so the question there is how much energy do we want to put at the council level to analyze a bill that's proposed early in the session and then may never make it out of committee or may substantively change. So typically, we would rely on the League of California Cities to advise us, hey, this is an area where we could definitely support or benefit from city letters of support. And that's one option as to, but then again, we do have the question of doing the analysis and discussion before we take an issue. So it is a workload.
So we haven't done these very often as a council, usually in real extreme, like this is really going to impact us, because a lot of, I mean, it's public safety. Yes, it's in our area of where we focus. It's traffic, absolutely. It's housing, absolutely. It's workforce issues. I mean, these are the different legislative bodies within the California League of Cities. How many times, council member Mueller, do you think we've done it? Maybe four or five times in the past six years? Have we voted and taken as a council? No, we actually created a bill that we brought to a, was it Assembly Member Bourbon? I forget who we brought it to.
So we've voted at the end of meetings before there's been proposed legislation brought up that we voted on a number of times, but I don't remember how many.
I don't remember how many. It hasn't been a lot. And I don't believe we did a staff. I think we brought forward, because the analysis we get from California League of Cities and from CCAG is a really thorough analysis. So I think usually, we brought it forward with that analysis and discussed it. I don't think, we used staff time to do that. I mean, it might have been in the policies, but I don't remember if that's how it was actually done.
There was a time when the city had a lobbyist, that there would be one meeting a year where the lobbyist, where there'd be a bunch of issues that we'd go through. But we don't have lobbyists anymore.
No, we actually interviewed one at one point.
Yeah.
But then backed off that. Or three, I don't know how many, I don't know how many they interviewed, but anyway. So I would say that we might look forward at this one saying that we're, unless there's an extraordinary circumstance, that we would take the analysis from CCAG or the other legislative group. I mean, it's definitely something we could look at. I mean, it's definitely something we could look at. I think we've been slightly more informal when we've done it in the past, but. I guess, while I'm very interested in this, I think that it's sort of beyond the bandwidth that we have at this point, so. That's why I was saying, if we can clean it up so that it doesn't suck bandwidth, all the better. Exactly. Okay. So that would be my concern.
Okay. I agree.
Excellent. Thank you. And then finally, in this, or, or on, for this page of the communications, proclamations, those are administered by the mayor, and unless the City Council wants to change that, it's fairly straightforward, so.
So I actually know of four proclamations, resolutions that are before, have been requested, and I have two residents who are regularly questioning me about that, so I'd love to know a little bit more how we proceed with that, but perhaps outside of this meeting. I would be happy to answer that. I mean, I think it's just a capacity issue right now, we are working on it, but we've had some absenteeism from work, and we have been focused on other, more regional issues. But we'll try and get those presented. But I, I think the question before you tonight is, is it acceptable to the council that the current routine is that the mayor, at, at the mayor's discretion, can issue proclamations that may or may not come before the council? And, and that has been our longstanding tradition, and is the council okay with that?
I don't have a problem with it, as long as it says on behalf of the mayor, right? I mean, there's a different, there's different language on the bottom that would denote whether or not it's on the mayor and the City Council, or the mayor and the city, or the mayor, right? So I don't have, I don't have an issue with it.
My only comment about that is I think that that's something that I certainly would not know the distinction until right now. So I don't have a problem with the way it currently runs, I just think we should be, the mayor should be very aware of what's within the, sort of the, what proclamations may, would be, would make sense without going to City Council as a whole, which I don't think there's been any issue, I can't imagine there being an issue. So I guess, it sounds great. We may be overthinking this one, but I, I think proclamations in and of themselves are ceremonial. They don't make any commitment other than a ceremonial commitment. And so, just based on that philosophy, I would say there's no difference between whether it's presented at a City Council meeting, or individually, or at a group meeting by the mayor.
I'm okay with the policy as it is.
Very good. Thank you. And then the final issue by way of communications is City Council's communications with staff. The policy currently requires that communications requests of staff are communicated directly to the city manager, and I would just ask if there is any desire, I mean, and, and the primary reason for that is, so, to have one focal point, allocating our resources in the most efficient manner appropriate. So we're not recommending any changes to that, but.
We can, we can clean it up and say through the city manager or her designee, because often, you know, you're not available, and it's, hey, go talk to Clay, or go talk to this person. That's, I guess that is through you, so. So through, through the, through the city manager seems to work fine.
Thank you. Moving on to council meetings, the first area here in this particular section is.
Excuse me, Mr. Baguero, I have a question, going back to communications. We have a policy on CCIN, I think I may have asked you this already, is there a way to put that into the City Council policy under communications? Whether it's, I'm not sure what, whether it's response, I don't know if anybody else has any input on this. What are your, what are your thoughts? So with this communication, CCIN, so we, we haven't had a lot of CCIN comments, but when we do, I know there's an automatic reply, and if it's something that's addressed to me, I either forward and ask a question of staff. So my question is, that's a part of the communication with City Council? So would that, would there need to be a policy within communications for City Council that applied to CCIN?
If, if I could just weigh in on that, in terms of the Brown Act, you know, we do have to be a little careful in this area. So if you have a CCIN comment from a member of the public, and then all five council members weigh in on, or respond to that comment, you could have a serial Brown Act meeting. I think in the past, the practice has been that if constituents are weighing in, the mayor will typically respond. And so there's no uncertainty about who's going to respond, if a response is, is required. So that type of policy works with the Brown Act. If, you know, it's just ad hoc, and you have several people responding at once, that poses a problem.
Or, or if it's something that is directly, like you have specific knowledge, you can directly mail them off CNN and be able to say, you know, look at the library for this resource, or whatever. But I'm trying to think, very rarely does that ever happen. I am wondering, so I often will respond to CCIN directly, is, that is not a Brown Act issue, I assume? I do, when I don't reply to anyone else.
So you post a public comment, replying?
No. I just respond directly to an individual.
That's not a problem at all.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. That's what I was saying, you directly respond to them.
Oh, so that's.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as it's not published, yeah.
Moving on to council procedure on council meetings, the first topic is placing items on the agenda. The way that the current policy is written is that council members or the public may request an item be added to the City Council agenda. There is an initial, so what would happen is, either a council member or a member of the public would ask for an item to be placed on the agenda. The first step is that the City Council, it be placed on a council agenda for council to decide whether they want to invest the resources or energy to explore the area. If a majority agrees to move forward, then staff will direct the resources to return with the analysis and the action item that may be required. And then finally, item, emergency items, as determined by state law, can be placed on the agenda as necessary by the city manager.
I think we're all comfortable with that.
Great. The next section, order of business, is a lengthy one. This, there was a CCIN that came in today about providing clear, clearer definitions, perhaps, of these various sections. Really here, I guess what I would ask the council is, does the, does the, or, this is technically the order they're supposed to appear on the council agenda. And so my question to you would be, is that acceptable, or is the current procedure functional and, and meeting the needs of the council? Or would you like to see some changes in the order of council agenda items?
Councilmember Carlton?
Sometimes we have study sessions at six, and sometimes we have them at seven. Just to throw it out there, because my heart breaks sometimes when people come here with their kids, and they're hungry, and they need to do homework, you know, people have lives. And it would be wonderful if we could say, like, public comment at seven, and if there's a study session, and we're starting at seven, it would be after public comment. But, but being able to have a more, because sometimes I have seen study sessions go way long, and these poor people are sitting there, and they, they just have something they really want to bring to our attention. And it would be, I'm sure, very appreciated by the public if we could give a more solid time when we would take the public comment. And how we word that into this, I don't know, because I know when we have a study session, the time depends on a lot of things. But if we had a closer target for when it would be available, I think that would make people very, very happy.
Yeah. So if I may, the, over the last probably year or so, there, we have been very flexible and fluid with the agenda and the order in which items are called. One of the, one of the, one of the practices that happened a couple of times last year was the mayor determines that at a certain time, we will sort of break an issue, hear an item, and then come back to the issue if the prior issue was, was undecided. So regardless of when the study session is scheduled, if the council desires to hear public comment at seven o'clock on, basically on the dot, we could put that in the, in the procedure, we could draft language in the procedures that basically gives, that confirms the mayor has, that the council wants to hear public comment at seven, or whenever, and that the mayor will sort of break the meeting to allow for it, and then return to the item.
I think it's hard to do anything on the dot, but it's close to, I think it's appreciated by the, the people that come to speak. I don't know what your thoughts are.
Were there any other comments on the order of business? And we have an opportu, we have an opportunity to reorder it at any time.
Question, is the question, can the council, in their procedure reorder it anytime, or is it on the mayor at the meeting making the determination to reorder?
Both.
So the council's free to modify its procedures whenever it likes, but there is a process to do that, just timing wise. So of course, the council can change the order, and then the mayor changing the order of meeting items has been the tradition. I don't know if, I don't recall seeing it in necessarily the procedures, off the top of my head.
I, I support that being continued as a tradition, because sometimes, you know, things happen where you have a lot of people, elderly, that's the last thing. It just seems to make sense to be more sensitive to people's needs.
I'm comfortable with, with where things are now.
So one, the only feedback that we have received on, on the order of meetings is that, is particularly in the area of notice public hearings. So our notices in public hearings say that the public hearings may, will occur at a, at a scheduled City Council meeting, starting at seven o'clock. And so you may recall recently that, or, I mean, it's, I think it's just standard business at this point, sometimes public hearings may not come up until very late. And so the applicants are, and if that, or whatever the, the issue may be, it's not necessarily an applicant, it could be an ordinance. So we have attorneys, and we may have, not our city attorney, but we may have consultants that are here for a public hearing, let's say on a rate, or something along those lines. And we have those folks sitting around in the, in the council chamber for quite some time, and they are billing us for that. So there may be, and this is something perhaps the Subcommittee can discuss a little further, but there may be a benefit to adopting a time certain for public hearings. Moving forward, one of the things that the current procedure does is it incorporates elements of Robert's Rules of Order, identifies sort of the discussion rules, obtaining the floor, questions to staff, interruptions, et cetera. I, on this particular issue, what I would ask the, if the City Council is open to considering is taking out anything that may be covered in a, in sort of a Robert's Rules, or Rosenberg's Rules, a different document, rather than restating it in our procedure, it just makes our procedures a little longer than they perhaps need to be. So we could put references, but we wouldn't actually write out the entire definition, or how this all works, if the council is supportive of that.
Does anyone have any objections to that? That's fine.
And then something we are very familiar with is conducting business at late hour, calling for a vote at 11:00. Is there any interest in changing that?
Can we make it 10:30?
No, I think 11:00 is fine.
Councilmember Mueller?
I personally know our problem moving it to 10:30, because that way we can always extend it. But I think it's good to, like, keep us on pace. So I don't have any problem with doing it, but I'm, if you guys want to keep it 11:00, that's fine with me.
So can we move it to 10:30?
Yeah. And just for some reference, there are some cities that do it around 10:00 as well, and of course, the council can move it as, as, as it desires, but, you know, 10:00 tends to be a time that, yeah, we're.
So is, when we start meetings at six, then we can have a 10:00 check-in? If we start meetings at seven, we do 10:30?
So it'd be four hours after the start time.
That's still a long time.
That's fine. That works, four hours after the start time.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Are we having a closed session?
Regular meeting. Regular. Yeah. So if it's regular meeting, we, four hours would be 11:00, because our regular meetings start at seven, so we would do three hours after the start of the regular meeting?
We're not going to get anything done?
So I would say, I would say 10:30.
Okay. Very good.
Just hold, that's me, I think we just hold it at 10:30.
Thank you. Other guidelines in the council meetings, there are, the, the current policy discourages side conversations, disruptions, and interruptions. The disruptions, interruptions, both go for council members, as well as members of the public. The procedure has a protocol to limit disruptive behavior, so in the event that any, anyone in the meeting is being disruptive, the mayor has a procedure to ask for that person to refrain from their disruptive behavior, be removed. The current policy limits breaks to five to 10, I don't know how you have a limit range, but it's five to 10 minutes is, is the ideal time for, for breaks. And then the current procedure imposes time limits on speakers. Currently, that's at three minutes. So if there's any requests or interest in changing any of these items, it'd be helpful.
I found out that, excuse me, other cities have a limit on how many three minutes you can add together. And, because it doesn't happen often, but sometimes you get like four people, and someone has a, a little diatribe there. And I've, I've noticed that many cities have a limit of, of two, and I'm just throwing it out there, that we could consider as well, as we, as we're talking about getting things to move more smoothly, or quickly.
Councilmember Mueller? Councilmember Nash?
Occasionally, we've had, we've decided upfront to have two-minute public speaker times rather than three, and I'm wondering if, whenever possible, if we decide to decrease the number, if that could go into the agenda, if it's decided upon ahead of time? So I don't know if it's actually something we wanted in the procedure, no, Judy's. Anyway, it's just a thought, just so that, I know, I've had people who prepared specific three-minute comments, and then come here and find out it's two minutes, and that throws them, and so whatever we can do to give that information ahead of time, when it's possible, I know it's not that often that we do decide. Thank you.
So if I, if I may, it's always easier to add than to reduce, so perhaps the policy states that the standard, and the agenda states the standard is two minutes, however, the mayor can add to three minutes as, as desired, or even amend downward, if necessary for a particular issue. But it, you know, the two being sort of the average.
What do other cities nearby do, do you know?
I can get that information for the council when this comes back. My recollection is it's primary, two minutes is very common.
How often does the, the policy and procedures come back to the council to review?
Our standard practice up until last year was that the council reviewed and reviews annually their policies and, or their procedures manual, as part of the goal-setting process. So it's typically in January. So it's typically in January.
Councilmember Nash.
I'm just wondering if we can have it maybe six months after goal-setting so that we don't, just, everything seems to get lost, at least in my world, during goal-setting. So it would be great if it could be at a different time, but an annual review sounds good.
I think the reason why they did it at that time was because every mayor had a different personality and wanted to conduct, might want to conduct the meetings in a certain way. So they tried to do it that they, so if the mayor like had an idea that they wanted to give the rest to the council, they could sort of do it then. So I don't know.
If I may, it's simply tradition that it happens with goal-setting. And so if the preference is that it happens at a very early regular meeting of a new mayor's term, that that's easy enough to accommodate, rather than having it linked to the goal-setting session. It could happen very early in January.
Goal-setting used to happen in a day. I'm not really sure we've finished.
Just keeping an eye on time, unless there are any other comments, I think that this is my last section. And this, the council's procedures articulate values of respect. That, the highlights there are that the council discussion focus on policy matters. Criticism of members is inappropriate. Proper decorum. Councilmembers are encouraged to demonstrate proper decorum as others express their views. Treat members of the public equally. This particular matter comes up when, I think, in my past experience, this is particularly important when we, when the mayor is enforcing the time limit. So if some, if one person's allowed to speak for five minutes and everyone else is only allowed to speak for three minutes, that's where this, this is discouraging that particular practice without donated time. Somebody just continues on past their expired time. And then finally, the council's procedures discourage the audience from clapping, booing to maintain the, to maintain a welcoming environment for all perspectives. So unless there's a desire or request to change any of these or expand upon them.
These are fine.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. As the city manager mentioned there, we've been quite busy with some regional issues lately, so I don't know when we'll be able to come back to you on this particular item, but we will get it as soon as possible.
And if we have any follow-up input or questions, do we give that to the city manager to give to the subcommittee, or do we give it directly to you, Mr. Pigaro?
I would defer to the city attorney on that particular question if, because we have two councilmembers on the subcommittee.
Right. I would suggest that you, you can pose questions to Mr. Pigaro's who can farm them out to the subcommittee. If you have specific comments, it should be in a public setting when this comes back to you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, what we've done before when we've had like things we want to put through is we put questions or comments through the city manager who neuters them. So we don't know who it's coming from. Just saying, these are some points that they would like you to consider, and that was considered okay from the Brown Act. When we've done things before, I, no?
Mm-hmm.
How come, how come we can send other information through the city manager and she shares it up?
I'm not sure that that can be done. So under the Brown Act, you're not supposed to be like having, you're not supposed to be having a meeting out of the public discourse. So if, you can't, and you can't do it in a way that you're using intermediary.
No, I mean, putting together points that they would like us to consider.
The city manager can talk about points and not say that your colleagues are thinking about it. But at the time, they identify that the colleagues are thinking about it, it's an intermediary discussion taking place.
Maybe the way it's been done before is they send it in and the city manager just brings them up. That's kind of what I mean by neutered.
Do we need the subcommittee anymore? I don't think we need it. Like, we did it last year just to try to get things framed, but now we just, that we've all met on it, like, I don't. Is that cool? Can we disband it?
So then your direction would be to take the comments that we've heard tonight, incorporate that into the policies, and bring that back as time allows, right?
Yeah.
I feel like you've got good direction. Are you comfortable with that?
The only thing that I would ask is if there's something that the council, on these two particular topics, if there's something that the council would like staff to incorporate. I believe that based on the guidance we have tonight, if there's a request to incorporate additional items, are, can that be included in the staff recommendation as having arose after this council meeting?
So just, I'm still waiting on the sunshine calendar policy. Like, wasn't in the staff, wasn't in the staff report, but I'm still waiting on it. So, but that can just come back to council.
I have a question about the sunshine policy. Is that, would that be a policy independent of the city council policy, or would it live inside the city council policy?
So one of the, our current practice is to have a procedure manual, which makes it rather cumbersome to keep up to date. And we've transitioned to standalone policies, and we will have a council, or standalone procedure, and we will have a council procedures page. So all of these will be coordinated. They should not be duplicative, but it's not one big document. So to the extent that when the, when the sunshine ordinance for, or sunshine procedure, for lack of a better term, comes forward, it would be standalone.
Councilmember Nash, did you have a question?
Okay. So if, if we're not going to take this back to the subcommittee, I guess we'll come back with what we've heard tonight, unless there's any further comments that any of the council want to make.
At this time, I don't have any more comments.
Okay. So, and just, just so we're clear, if there are additional comments, those would best be provided when we bring it back.
Councilmember Nash.
I would say no more comments until you bring it back. Because I was just going to say, if you're looking for any additional comments, it would be really helpful to have a copy of the presentation so that we can think about it.
Well, we'll be glad to supply the presentation. Well, and those additional comments can be made when we make it, when we come back with the policy. Unless, Councilmember Mueller, you wanted to meet to go over the sunshine thing and make sure that gets laid out? Are you good? Okay. Just offering.
Thank you, Mr. Pigaro.
And so then is there also a follow-up item at some point to bring back the elimination of the subcommittee? Is that what we're proposing? Or you want to think about that?
So we will bring back the, the subcommittee just to disband it, or to bring back the subcommittee to make a recommendation? I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think that when we bring back the report on these policy modifications, we could also then recommend the elimination of the policy, of the subcommittee, which is what I think councilmembers Mueller and Carlton were proposing.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Herron, do we have to wait until 7:00 to start the meeting? Wonderful. Well, at this time, we are taking public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject. We already did that. On any subject not listed on the agenda, each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction and what you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda items brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. We have two public speakers. The first is Jackie Sebrian. The next public speaker is Bill Kirsch.
I'm, first of all, thank you for your service to the city. It's awesome. I'm Bill Kirsch. I'm here as a private citizen, and I'm here to advocate for safe pedestrian access citywide, but more specifically in the downtown area. So I see a challenge and an opportunity. The challenge is, we have three big projects that are coming online here in a year or two. 1300, 500 El Camino, and the big one over here by the train station. It's going to throw 1,000 or more people into our downtown area. And so the challenge is, how do we move these folks around? How do they access downtown? How do they get across El Camino? How do they get to Burgess and feel safe doing that? How do they get to this train station? I think we don't want these people to have to get into automobiles. I think what we want is to have safe walking and safe crossing of El Camino. So specifically, there's three crossings of El Camino. There's Ravenswood, there's Santa Cruz Avenue, and there's Oak Grove. And we can make these intersections a lot safer without impeding car traffic, without taking away parking. And I have a, an example of what could be done. This is the Santa Cruz Avenue, El Camino intersection. Can you all see that? Maybe? Yes? Okay. So at the top is the British Bankers Club. This is the existing condition right now. The pedestrians, if they want to cross from the downtown to British Bankers Club side to the, to the train station side of El Camino, that's an 86-foot crossing. That's from the back of the wall all the way to the very back point of this room here. You have six lanes of traffic. What could be done, a simple thing, would be to eliminate the, the right turn lane going north on El Camino, right there at the British Bankers Club, and also the right turn lane going south into Santa Cruz Avenue. Those are very underutilized turns. In fact, the peak hours, in the peak hour, there's like 40 cars that use it, and the peak hour in the evening, 70 cars that use that turn. That's the peak. So what we've done is we've accommodated, you know, very few cars in exchange for making the crossing hazardous to pedestrians. So we could eliminate those turns there and just have one of the through lane, the right through lane as a turn. We can shorten the crossing distance by a third. And then we can do that, actually, can you, ma'am, could you go ahead and forward to the next slide? Thank you. This is just showing bulbouts, eliminating those right turns, not eliminating them, but eliminating the lane. Oh, my God, my time's up. So what you can have is safer crossings. You can have continuous bike lanes through those intersections, and we'll encourage people to walk and to not drive their car. That, to me, is congestion relief. Thank you.
Can we have a copy of the slides? Thank you. Ms. Herron, are there any more public comments? The next item on the agenda are city council member reports. Are there any city council member reports?
Yes, I have.
Councilmember Carlton.
So I've been at the National League of Cities Conference. I was going to call in, but with everything going on, I decided it best to come back early. I literally got up at 5:00 a.m. and flew in from D.C. today. So I don't have my presentation ready, but I did get a lot of really good, really interesting information that I look forward to sharing with you in the next week before we're, we meet again, and if you want even during the next council meeting. I just haven't had a chance to unpack yet.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash, or Councilmember Mueller.
So today, I attended the board supervisors' meeting because they had a county, well, one, they were going over with the coronavirus, which I wanted to be there for. But the second was that they were going over a new county effort to look at equity within jurisdictions, which I know is important in this council. And they're, they've embarked on a contract with an organization that did this process for the city of San Jose. And I raise it to everyone's attention, both our staff and council, because they will be creating metrics that measure progress in equity, all the way down to the micro level of ZIP code. And so I think it would actually behoove us to have our staff and stakeholders part of, be part of that process to make sure that the metrics that they look at, there's basically four, four different places within the timeline that they're going to be developing these metrics. And so I think it'd be really smart for us to be integrated into that project and make sure that some of the things that are important to us are integrated in as well. And it's also one of those things where if we hook ourselves into the county process, it allows us to actually save resources from a duplicative effort. So, but I thought that'd be something you guys would be interested in, in learning about, because it's, I know it's close to everyone's heart.
Councilmember Nash.
So I went to a few meetings that I thought would be interesting to cover here. One is the community convening by Home for All, which was on second units, maintaining the momentum. And they came out with a really great packet, packet on second units and sort of steps on how to proceed through, thinking about second units, and also some floor plans and all for second units, just standard floor plans. And then they also had a new startup that is just getting going called Symbium that actually visualizes A.D.U. planning ordinances for each city, which looked really interesting. And I'm hoping, Mike Nochi from our staff was there, and I'm hoping that he will bring that forward, at least to talk with our housing, well, he's with the housing, and also the community development group, because it looked like, well, they did a great show. So it looked very, very interesting. And they're just getting off the ground this month. And then also Rachel Horst and Kurt Conrad and Mike Doran were there, who are all commissioners. And so I was really happy to see a good turnout there. I also attended a Caltrain local policymakers group, their monthly meeting, and that was mostly about high-speed rail. The thing that I found fascinating there is that they were saying that high-speed rail does not need grade crossings and, but that they will be supporting grade crossings at the state level for funding and other needs. So they will support cities there. I also attended Black History Month celebration at our senior center, which was just amazing. Everyone should try to go to a celebration there at some point after this current coronavirus situation. But it is, it's an amazing center with just a tremendous community. And it was, I highly recommend every, everyone attend a meeting in the, or a celebration in the future. And they do have a lot of celebrations. I also did a training on how to be an effective Peninsula Clean Energy Board member, which was just amazing because I had no idea how intricate energy is and how many different regulations there are, just at all different levels. And finally, a housing commission meeting where we've got two projects which will be coming forward to us, I believe, within the next month or two on short-term rentals and also on A.D.U.s. Thanks.
Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Mueller?
Sorry for the second, but I shared the good news first, now the bad news. So the bad news is discussion ensued with the county's chief financial officer, which is something that we need to be aware of here, which is probably already intuitive. But that's that there is an expectation that there's going to be significant reductions in sales tax. And then for us internally, that intuitively gave rise to the fact where we can probably expect that we're going to have significant reductions in TOT tax, significant reductions in real estate transfer fees. And so there is the recognition of the fact that though it's not an economic cost, it's being caused by this public health threat, that we are entering into a recession time period. And so with that, going into our goal-setting this year and also our budget discussions, really should be thinking, I would suggest to start thinking about, do we want to spend that reserve money? Or do we want to bank it? Because we may need it. And then revisit that later on. And then how are we going to be preparing for that? It'll be two months out before we really start to see those numbers come in. But there's already indications that it's happening.
Thank you. Thank you for the report-outs. And we will be moving on to the next item. I do not have a report-out for a subcommittee. I'd like to announce that we have our annual recruitment for city advisory bodies through April 3rd. So if you or anyone you know is interested, please apply. Now we'll move on to our consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff person, or a member of the public decides they would like to discuss the item or continue it to a later date. So at this time, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mayor Taylor, I do have public comment on item G7.
Okay. Well, we will take the public comment first. Mr. Bill Kirsch?
The first speaker is Susan Rubado, Rubio? Forgive me for mispronouncing.
Thank you, city council members. Thank you for being here tonight despite the craziness. The NTMP process is so slow and painful. There is so much room for improvement. It took me four years to get to this point, just to get some speed bumps in the neighborhood because people were coming through too fast. So it's just, I have a lot of input that I could give you guys. I hope that you can try to improve the process for other people because if residents are all in agreement that a little thing is just, something could be tweaked and to make the neighborhood safer, it shouldn't take them four years and this much work. So the NTMP project in the Willows, the speed bumps and the yield sign and the road closure were extremely effective. Speeds went down from 31.1 miles per hour down to 25.8 miles per hour on Marmona, which is down 17%. And I'm quoting you from the first measure we took, June 4th, 2016, to the last measure we took, October 14th, 2019. And then speeds on McKendry went down from 29.5 miles per hour to 21.2 miles per hour, which is down 28%. And then on Baywood, speeds went down 30.6 miles per hour, down to 23.6 miles per hour, which is down 23%. Volumes also decreased, which is also thanks in part to the no-turn signs, which are amazing. And I don't know if that's a topic for discussion tonight, but so many people in the neighborhood love those no-turn signs. And if we could please just keep those, it would be no work for anyone, just keep the signs. The volumes greatly decreased of cut-through traffic. So on Marmona, volumes went from 1,280 vehicles in a 24-hour period down to 770 vehicles, which is down 40%. On McKendry, they went down from 251 vehicles to 215, which is down 14%. And on Baywood, they went from 1344 vehicles in a 24-hour period down to 756, down 44%. The people voted, and they really want this to stay. We needed 50 or 51% approval, and we got the 57. When you take a closer look, out of those who voted, we actually got 90% approval. So people really want this. Thank you for, I hope you can move this forward. Thank you for restoring the peace and quiet in the neighborhood.
Thank you for your public comment. The next public speaker is Mary Ratner.
Hello. I also live on Marmona Drive, and I've lived there for over 40 years and even more in Venlo Park because I moved from O'Connor Street. Marmona Drive has always been a busy street. But it's not just busy with cars. It's busy with walkers, people walking their dog, their children by themselves in groups, joggers, bikers. And it's on the path to the dog park. So there's like a virtual parade going in front of my front window where I sit with my computer. So in a good way, it's been busy. But then, in a bad way, it also was busy. And when my kids were growing up, it became kind of a speedway. And people weren't always aware that there was a curve. So my house is just before the curve. So I knew they were from outside the neighborhood because they come speeding down the street and suddenly, you know, have to screech to, slow down at this curve. So that's always been kind of an unsafe area. And we learned to live with it. We taught our kids to cross the street so carefully. And, but in the last five years, it just got so much worse with increased speed and frustrated drivers, inattentive frequently. There was a lack of awareness and lack of civility. And because they were so frustrated with Willa Road, they were using it as a regular bypass, again, speeding. So my beautiful street became a speedway. And then the traffic calming measures came along and have been wonderful, to turn it back to such a livable, safe, friendly street, which has restored our peace of mind. And I just urge you to make the speed bumps permanent and the signage, which is also helpful to alert people you're going into a residential area. And because I'm really worried that if that's not done, we are going to have a tragedy on that street. The kids are used to, and people are just used to it being a civil place. And so please help protect our, the citizens and their pets and everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment, Ms. Ratner. Ms. Herron, do we have any more public speakers on the consent calendar? Councilmember Mueller?
I'm going to move the consent calendar.
I had one com, I wanted to pull G5.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to move the consent calendar, but G5?
I have a comment on G2.
Do you guys have comment? Do you guys want to, you guys just want to make comments? Or do you want to pull the items?
Just to make a comment.
Okay, if they're just comments, I'll, if they're just comments, I'll move the whole consent calendar.
I actually want to bring something.
You want to bring it? All right, I'll move the whole consent calendar except G5. And then we can take your comment and then take a second.
Councilmember Nash, did you have any input on any items on the consent calendar? Before G5?
No.
All right. Councilmember Carlton, do you want to make your comment about G5?
No, we have a motionless vote.
Okay.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar with the exception of G5.
And I have a comment on G2.
Yes. So you can make your comment on G2 at this time, and then we will vote on the consent calendar minus G5. First, we need a comment on G2.
Oh, you're waiting for me? I'm sorry, I'm waiting for the screen to turn. Okay. My comment on G2 is that is the Neighborhood Service Center agreement as far as extending the contract. My only comment is that we bring the item back to look at potential future uses for the space there, for a community-serving space, especially since we're going to lose some in the Bellhaven neighborhood with the upcoming project.
So point of clarification, you're not asking us to bring the contract back, right? You're just asking us to bring that, the concept of higher utilization of the Neighborhood Service Center?
Yes. Do you have a comment? Councilmember Nash? Turn your light on.
As long as we're on this, is this out of the general fund Howard's payments for this project? Is it attributed to the police department at all? Yes. Okay. Are there? My understanding was that we were actually getting some money off to offset this. Is that continuing or not? City attorney can answer that.
So there was a site agreement with Facebook to subsidize $99,000 a year of the rent, provided that the substation be used to deploy police personnel in the east part of town. That site agreement, though, expires, or expired in 2017. So we're not currently receiving any rent subsidy from Facebook at this time.
Okay, thank you.
The motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs absent.
Councilmember Carlton?
All right, my question with G5 comes with having this go before the Environmental Quality Commission as an appeal board. When this comes, traditionally, the EQC isn't an appeal board. That would be something like the Transportation Commission or the Planning Commission. And one of the things that we put in there, which I'm still not really sure how that's going to work, is that if someone had a good reason why they needed a gas oven, I'm just going to make something up. It will be low-quality. I'm just making up an example, okay? Say, somebody in one of the larger buildings wants to put in a pizza place, and it has to be a gas oven pizza, okay? Just random. And everyone thinks this is a great idea, and they put it through. Part of that, that we passed says that if they do that, that pizza place then has to do something to balance out the impact on the environment, which in many cases might be, as was outlined in the thing we passed, putting in solar panels or doing things like this. That really is more intricately designed, part of a design, part of a thing that the Planning Commission would pass. And as this applies to new buildings, it's going to go before the Planning Commission anyway. And it seems that it would be more streamlined and more efficient on many levels for this to be something that just goes as part of the package to the Planning Commission rather than having something go before the EQC that might not be something that they normally deal with in terms of the mitigations. And so I was going to put forward that it go before Planning instead of EQC.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton, for your question slash comment.
Because you guys are so busy doing other things, too. I, you know.
No, it's a fair question. And so when we analyzed, we did look at the Planning Commission as a potential body to review appeals for restaurants in regards to stoves. And it really came down to a workload issue as to how much the Planning Commission already has on their plates. And that was really the driver in having the EQC look at it and aligning it also with their mission as well. So again, it's, those were the pieces of data that we looked at.
I assume that's why you put it there. But then, as I thought about it, the thing that drags us out, the thing that slows us down is something going from one commission to the next commission to the other because often either they meet once a month or they have a very full agenda, so it's weeks before things go back and forth. And if you have something that goes before the EQC, and they say they want it there to be a structure or a solar panel or something like this, and then the people say, well, as we're building it, we don't know if that's going to work with this design, it's going to bounce back and forth between the Planning Commission and the EQC, which is actually going to create more workload than it's going to save. Because we've put in that mitigation, that mitigation alone makes me very concerned that this will become a bouncing ball that will suck everyone's time. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, yes. Again, yeah, that's, yeah, a completely fair assessment of that. The mitigation doesn't necessarily require solar or other, there's kind of a negotiation that goes on between the applicant and how they mitigate the greenhouse gas emissions that we're still analyzing and looking to put in the administrative guidelines. And so it doesn't necessarily, again, have to be solar. It could be another potential option. Maybe they use clean vehicles to deliver food or something like that.
That's a great idea, yeah. But you see my concern that this actually, I just look at it, and I think about the process, and I think, oh, this is not going to be smooth. And more than anything, I think the council's trying really hard to be thoughtful about looking into the future and making sure that we have elegant solutions and not things that bounce. So I mean, do you think it would help? How would you address my concerns?
It only created another question in my mind that maybe Jessica can answer. So, I mean, I'm not clear as to whether all restaurants go through the Planning Commission process because if they're already approved uses.
No, this is new buildings.
Right.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
And with new buildings, it would go through because this does, this only applies to new buildings.
Okay.
I mean, do you want to table this for, and have a discussion about it?
That's, yeah, it's definitely an option.
Okay. As I say, and if you guys don't think it's a problem, that's fine, too. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that I just have a concern about it.
Councilmember Nash?
I understand the concern. But I actually think it's a tremendous benefit to have the expertise on the EQC actually evaluating these projects and the benefits and the offsets. And I think that the EQC is the right place to do it. Perhaps we want to, or I guess normally, we could just review it within a year and see if there's any issues, and we could alter it at that point. But I actually would strongly recommend that the EQC, with their expertise, and be the appeal board. Maybe if you look at it again in a year. Usually, it wouldn't come back, something like this, for a few years. Unless I'm saying, if we put it in that we want to look at it again, something like that. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there. Excuse me. Councilmember Mueller?
So it's funny because at first, I was like, it's an interesting discussion, right? Because you're trying to weigh efficiency versus who owns the subject matter area. But then there's a third argument, and that's like, that is, we're trying to take that subject matter and make it more holistic throughout, throughout all of the different facets of the city. So to have the Planning Commission look at that and be educated on that might not necessarily be a bad thing. But what I'd be, before I'd make a decision on it, would be, I'd actually be interested in hearing from the commissions. I'd like to hear if the planning commissioners want it. And I'd like to hear if the environmental quality commissioners have an objection to them having it.
And please, if this goes back for discussion, it is not, I am in no way questioning their level of expertise. They are experts on the environment, and I respect them and I thank them for the work that they're doing. I just want to make sure we're dealing with process and workflow.
And the only reason why I said I'm curious if the environmental quality commissioners have a problem with the planning commission have it is because I know in my time with the environment... the Environmental Quality Commissioners recently, they've been very focused on that they want, they want their work product to be spread out into the other departments and implemented in the other departments and become matter-of-course in the other departments. And so, to do that, you have to share that subject matter with other departments. So, but I'm, so I'm curious to know if that, what their take on that is and what the Planning Commissions take on that. It's going to, for us to achieve the goals that the Environmental Quality Commission has set out, it's going to require sharing that with other, other parts of the city. I don't know if we're ready yet to do that. I don't know if they're going to want to do that, but it's time to ask them both if they're interested in it.
Is this a time-sensitive matter? Because I agree with Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember Carlton. And I'm interested in knowing what the Planning Commission or the EQC commissioners think.
It's not a time-sensitive. I mean, within a reasonable timeframe before, this number would be ideal, in case we do get in any cases.
If I may, I think the one concern I would have is that it could be that either both of the commissions want to do it or don't want to do it. But I think it's also important to consider how efficiently we can process the appeal. And I think the Planning Commission could be much more delayed in an appeal evaluation, sorry, than the EQC. So, just from a staff perspective, I would recommend that we continue with the EQC and see how that works. We could do 12 to 18 months evaluation. We might not have a single appeal during that period and then come back to council for reconsideration.
Do you have any objections?
No, I don't have an objection. I mean, it sounds like professional staff really has talked about this and thinks it's the most efficient way. So, I don't have an objection to it, but I do, you know, I do think we have to figure out how to break down, if we're really going to achieve the goals that we're talking about from our, from our, from our climate perspective, we're going to have to start to break down these silos. So, and share this subject matter within the other departments.
If I may, again, I think that the EQC has been very passionate about that very issue with their liaison Rebecca Lucky, and she in turn has been very passionate with the staff. So, rest assured, that is very present to all of us.
Thank you.
So, I'm happy to agree to it if we bring it back in a year or 18 months, just to make sure it's working.
Agreed.
The motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs absent.
Sorry, pardon me, Mayor Taylor. We just want further clarification on whether it's 12 or 18 months. That gives us a hard, a hard line to work with. So, either the first case that we get or...
The first case that you get or 12 months.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on the agenda is our regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. First item we have is H1, receive a progress report on Menlo Park's tenant relocation assistance program administered by Samaritan House and provide direction on the next steps.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and council members. Tonight, we will be providing a six-month progress report on the city's tenant relocation assistance program. By way of some background, last March, the City Council approved a new tenant relocation assistance ordinance, which is applicable to certain circumstances and doesn't apply when a household must relocate due to substantial rent increase or a notice to vacate a unit without cause. At the same time that council approved that, the, council approved the creation of a community housing fund to be used to provide relocation assistance payments in, to Menlo Park residents facing displacement from their rental units for reasons not addressed by the new ordinance. Council approved a one-time initial funding of $100,000 for the tenant relocation assistance program with the expectation that private community donations would be contributed to leverage the city's initial commitment. In May of last year, the council approved the new tenant relocation assistance program guidelines and by resolution authorized a funding agreement with Samaritan House to administer the program, which included $100,000 for the direct relocation assistance payments and $12,000 for program administration fees. Assistance is primarily for circumstances that are not covered by the city's relocation ordinance, including unsustainable rent increases, if a landlord chooses not to continue to lease or rent to a tenant, or landlord issues notice to vacate. In addition to an applicant submitting proof of an action that will result in relocation, households must meet a number of requirements, including income requirements. They must occupy a unit that's located within incorporated Menlo Park for a minimum of 12 months, have a current valid lease or a rental agreement with landlord. They can't be delinquent on rental payments, and they also cannot be in the process of an eviction. They must have incomes at or below 150% of the area median income for San Mateo County. And just by reference, the median, median income in San Mateo County for a household of four is 136,000. So, 150% is well above that. If a household is determined to be eligible, a one-time relocation assistance expenses of up to 5,000 could be used for the increased rent payment, for rent increase, rent or lease deposit on a new unit, or other moving-related expenses. At the time council approved the funding for this program, council expressed a desire to gain a better understanding of the need for assistance and approved the program to initially be structured as a one-year pilot with an intent to transition to a continuing program that can be renewed every two years. At the time, there was no baseline data on the demand for relocation assistance. And so, as a program requirement, the administrator, which is Samaritan House, is required to collect data, prepare and submit reports to the city. This information is intended to inform a needs analysis for City Council, for City Council's review and further direction. In summary, during the first six months of the program operation, there has not been any other community financial contributions to the city's initial fund. And there have not been any requests for relocation assistance from Menlo Park residents. At this point, I'd like to introduce Latrice Taylor, the Associate Director of Programs and Services for Samaritan House, to provide an overview of Samaritan House services, talk a little bit about the core service center role, and then provide a detailed progress report on the tenant relocation assistance program.
Good evening. No, thank you. Good evening. I'm Latrice Taylor, Associate Director of Programs and Services with Samaritan House. Samaritan House has been around approximately 45 years as the emergency safety net organization in central San Mateo. We are one of eight core agencies. And within the past two years, we were, we are now assigned to have an office as a core agency as, in East Palo Alto in Menlo Park. So, we now serve this area and we're more, we're excited that we were invited to come in by the Human Service Agency. Samaritan House, in being the emergency safety net organization, we start with the most basic of food, clothing, shelter. When people walk through our doors, they are coming to us because they have an emergency need. Case managers sit with clients and they talk to them about what is the emergency, and that may be rental assistance, it may be food, it may be just seeking information. How can I get connected with services in the community? If Samaritan House does not provide it, then we're the ones who have to come up with the answers for anyone who's sitting across our case manager's desk, trying to help them be connected to the, to services in the community. We are the largest partner of Second Harvest Food Bank. So, in the past year, we put out over 1.4 million hot and cold meals across this county. We have a shelter where we assist 90 single adults, men and women, in this county. We have a worker resource center. We have a dining hall. We have two free clinics, one located in Redwood City that is totally free for anyone who does not have insurance. Anyone who walks through our doors, we are there and accessible to help figure out how to help your residents that are right here in this community. With regards to the funds that we were asked to administer, in the time period, we were not able to administer any of the funding. But what we did decide to do was provide data for you, so you'd know exactly what Samaritan House has done in Menlo Park. During this time period, we have served 65 Menlo Park households, which is 165 individuals, with services including food, clothing, shelter, and financial assistance, which could be rental assistance, deposit, car repair, utilities, medical equipment, and anything else that may fall within the guidelines of the different funding sources that we administer. Of the 65 households, seven households sought financial assistance, six for rental assistance, one for mortgage. No Menlo Park program funds were used for any household seeking financial assistance, and this occurred because no household met the eligibility criteria outlined in the program guidelines, including as follows. Households must not be delinquent on rental payments. Anyone who walks through our doors is generally coming because there is an emergency. It is because they, they are delinquent. They have no other avenue. And also, it should be said that these are, these are people who are having a bump in the road. So, anyone that we assist with financial assistance, it, they also have to go through a strenuous process of proving that they will be able to maintain moving forward. So, we do a lot of case assessment. We ask for people's income. We need to see that they'll be able to pay their rent or pay their car repair, whatever that may be, in months to come. We also do a case, we do case conferencing, where the whole team has to sit around a table and look and examine that file in front of us and make sure this household needs the assistance but also can maintain moving forward. Other things that we found in just those seven households, three of the households were senior adults. So, we know that they are aging in place. We know that they are not, their income is not going to change if they're getting, say, social security. Three were single female, single parents. So, we're talking about single females who have children under the age of 18. And then, we had one single adult female. And different reasons as to why they came in, just for financial assistance, some had more than one reason, and that could be that they had a temporary layoff. Right now, as we're going through coronavirus, we know that there are going to be people at home who are hourly wage earners, but they're not going to be able to have enough for rent. We've already been discussing, how do we, how do we assist those individuals? Because we know they do have jobs, but when they bring their information to us, we will be able to determine they'll be able to maintain their rent once that job calls them back in. So, we have to look at a case very carefully as to how to keep them housed, because it actually costs more for people who are homeless than those who already have housing. Another part, just so you know, is that we're trying our best to inform Menlo Park residents about the services that we have to offer. We have hired outreach specialists who, we've already been making contact with different agencies in Menlo Park, so that we can get information, our flyers, anything around our medical clinics. We're trying to get that out into the community. We, this coming Friday, we'll start delivering hot meals to Brentwood School, and we're hoping that we'll be able to expand that to the rest of the Ravenswood School District. We also now occupy space at the community center on Terminal Avenue every Tuesday from 9 to 4 o'clock, where anyone in the, in the area can come in and see one of our case managers. We've been taking part in senior, in the senior center, so that they, the residents there can also see that we're there and available to help them. And just to say, if there's anyone even in the audience, a lot of times, people do not want to come through the doors, and it takes a lot of courage for any of your residents to come in and ask for help. So, I will even say, if anyone is in this audience, and there probably are more than one or two, who has a need for assistance, alls we ask is that you pick up the phone and call Samaritan House, and if we can't help you, we will find out who can. And that's what we do.
Thank you. So, in closing, Samaritan House staff have made some informal initial recommendations to expand the guidelines, so that they, that they feel might better serve Menlo Park residents faced with unexpected financial emergencies that affects their ability to pay their rent and mortgage. Staff recommends that City Council direct staff to seek the Housing Commission review of the Samaritan House recommendations for program modifications and return to the City Council with these proposed amendments to the program. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Mueller? Oh, thank you for your presentation.
So, if we wanted tonight to not send it back to the Housing Commission, but just go ahead and alter the fund, we could do that, correct?
Correct. You could make your recommendations. If you recall, the program was adopted by resolution, so we could amend the resolution and bring that back to a future council meeting.
Okay, and that would speed it up, speed up the process. And you went where I was going to go with COVID-19. So, the state took care of the issue candidly that led to the rise of this fund with its legislation at the end of last year. And so, now we have this fund here, but the original intent, why we made that fund, is no longer the case. The state's already, already put a limit on rent increases. So, if we said in light of COVID-19, we wanted to repurpose the fund so that it provided rental assistance to those in need, including those who are hourly workers right now, who are being sent home from their jobs and not being paid. But we just opened it up to Samaritan House to say, for those in need, based on the criteria that you already distribute funds, we could do that this evening and instruct the resolution be crafted that way, and we could use COVID-19 as a purpose for that. Is that correct?
Correct. Those recommendations could be made tonight, and then we can bring back the resolution.
All right. So, I want to hear public comment, but I'm just going to let you guys know in advance, that's going to be my recommendation, my, my motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I'll have more questions, but I just have some initial questions. Did you apply to our community grant program that we have every year?
No.
Why?
I, I don't know that we actually knew about this. Was it, was there an RFP?
Yeah, there is every year. And we give away a quarter of a million, $300,000 to different organizations that provide social services in Menlo Park.
Now, I do know there is one funding source that we did receive recently, but I cannot tell you exactly which one it was. Something was...
I thought you were on the list, but I...
They, excuse me, they are on the list. I think they received $30,000.
That's what I thought. I thought we'd already given you $30,000 for, for social services kind of thing.
I remember something just came through, so...
All right, that's good.
Didn't realize the same thing.
Because this really needs to be put in a different bucket, kind of where I think my colleague was going. What we set up was specifically tenant relocation services. And what we're talking about here is no longer anything to do with tenant relocation services. It's a different bucket. And really, that bucket goes through the community grant program that we have. And I think in light of the impending plague, it makes sense to put together a special fund. But this is social services. It's not, it's a different, different deal. And so, I think in line of doing that, I can see doing it. But, but remember when it comes up next year to include this and expand what you ask, because the correct way that this gets funding, when it's not an emergency year, is through that, that process, that program that we put forward. Now, I have good news. I spoke to Rovi, who you all might remember from the Apartment Association, and Rovi said that she had apartment owners and people who are willing to donate into the program, just because, I mean, in a way, it's kind of nice. The tenant relocation service is that pot of money that we have. It's, it's maybe good news that we don't have people that need that money for relocation, but I don't necessarily want all that money to go away. So, if she has people willing to provide the funding for that, you know, God bless the Apartment Association and those people, that's fine. I don't necessarily want to kill it. I do think that there's an opportunity cost on putting money where it might better benefit. people. But I don't think we have to necessarily kill one for the other. I think there might be ways of intelligently structuring it so that we keep something available for someone that may need it in the future. And with that, I'll open up, I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, we could just expand the scope. So we can keep, we could just expand the scope. So just call it, so have it take care of people who unfortunately slip through the track cracks and have to be relocated, but also to help those who need it to stay in place. But you would be able to do that. I think the way that we would call the fund is we would say, because we have to substantiate why we're doing this now, why are we stepping forward with a fund like this now? And I think the answer is, I mean, the answer is for me, this is similar to the comments that we talked about earlier this evening, in terms of the impending recession, for how long that lasts. We have this fund already set aside, and I think people are going to need it.
To that end, and again, I'm just throwing this out for conversation. I'm not married to any idea. The Community Grant Funding Subcommittee can get together, because there might be someone who says, well, hold on, I'm hip housing, or I'm this other organization that also helps with housing with people distressed, who we have donated to as well. We could look at it and say, this amount of money can go to Samaritan House, but we can also help these other areas. If we're saying that there's an impending emergency, it might be good to revisit some of the other services that we support as well.
Well, I suggest that we leave this money with the folks who already have it, just expand the criteria requirements, and then if we decide that we want to expand our social safety, we want to expand our social safety net by reopening the community grant program, that we do so at that time with advice on staff of, again, looking at what that budget might look like. So I think this fund is already in place with this provider. They've already, they already are, as their testimony has been, providing it to the public in Menlo Park. I think we can just repurpose this very quickly by changing the scope within the resolution, and then if we want to do something in response to COVID-19 as it occurs, and go out to the rest of our community grant partners, we can assess that at a later date and see if there's money coming down from the county or the state to do that. I'm comfortable doing it this way right now, because the money's already there, and they've already, it is already within their mission. But I think we also have to remember, our budget is going to be shrinking. What we've put into our budget's going to be shrinking.
Out of my point, yeah.
Councilmember Nash, do you have any comments? Ms. Herron, do we have any public comment? Councilmember Nash?
So I was wondering what you think about the discussion up here, as far as what would be the best way to administer it, and hopefully catch any Menlo Park renter who is in, or homeowner, any Menlo Park resident who is in dire straits at this point, either through a tenant relocation situation or through the COVID virus where they're not having money. They need money to make ends meet. And is there anything else that you would look for in that program?
I appreciate the comments, especially if you're looking at fast-tracking this, because the questions are being asked already of us, of, I believe even one case already came through today of people being, someone being laid off, and what that means for their future. So if there's anything with regards to expanding on the scope, that would be great. One thing just to add, since you brought up Rovi, we actually, Samaritan House has started a cohort, because we first did sit down with the CAA to discuss any contributions, but also, we have other partners, including mental health, HIF, where we said, what can we do around tenant readiness, being able to have people housed and stay housed? So we actually expanded on the conversation that was initially about donating to this fund. Now it's turned into a monthly meeting that's headed by our CEO, Bar Charlo, to say, what do we need to do to help people be ready to be housed and stay housed?
Thank you for the follow-up on that. I really appreciate the work that you're doing, and the fact that you have specific cases here in the city of Menlo Park that you can refer to. For me, that's what I'd like to see. When we created this fund, I had a feeling no one was going to be able to access it. So expanding it right now at our council meeting, to me, is great. I really appreciate that. By chance, do you use any of the stats that come through San Mateo County healthy, healthy San Mateo County?
Yes, however, anyone who's contracted with the Human Service Agency, we have to be on clarity, which is data-driven. So everything we do, because we have to report on outcomes, demographic information, that's how I could tell you, parse right down to who and what residents are being served right here. I can tell you about all 167 people based on the data that we have to collect on every case that we see. So if there's, if you're looking for jobs, if they are insured, whatever that information is, we collect it, because we can't just count how many people we help, but we are also looking at impact. So we actually do measures as to people who are at risk, all the way up to how do we get them stably housed? So we have to rely on data. It's a different game now, that we have to show results to funders such as yourself.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
I just want to make sure we're careful with the wording. We're not expanding this program. We are killing this program, and we are repurposing it as a social services program to help people, because what we're doing doesn't, it's not relocation, it's something new. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Mueller?
I was, I did have one question, because I don't recall it being part of the criteria we set. Where did the criteria come from that a person couldn't be in default of rental payment to take part in the fund?
So council asked staff to work with Samaritan House to develop some guidelines, and so we met with Samaritan House and considered some of their other programs, considered the relocation ordinance and some of those discussions, and then came back to council with the draft guidelines. And so that's where those came from. Do you have anything to add?
So that was developed with Samaritan House and staff, and was a professional recommendation? Okay. I appreciate that. Well, it's good to know in the future, we'll learn from the future from that. Thank you.
I want to thank you so much. I'm so happy to hear that you're meeting with the CAA monthly. I think that's fantastic. I love that they're supporting you, and I want to say kudos to you and them for working together to make better outcomes for people. That makes me very happy that you're working together.
Thank you for the presentation.
May I make a motion?
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion, then, that we go ahead and take the funds in the relocation assistance program, and change, actually, we'll change the resolution to make it a tenant, what would we call it? What would you call it? A tenant assistance program?
That'll be fine.
A tenant assistance program administered by Samaritan House. But I would like, within the resolution for, to state, in light of the COVID-19 crisis. And then also refer to the fact that there are hourly workers who are being laid off as a result of the crisis.
And so it's a one-time thing?
Right. So it's, well, it's for now, and then we can talk, right. So, because the resolution's a one-time thing until the funds are gone, we talk about later about whether, how long we need to do that.
Otherwise, this really should go through the process. What we're doing makes me, I think we're doing the right thing, but it makes me uncomfortable, because if I was Second Harvest, or many of the other people, we set, we get down to like, do we give them $7,000, do we give them $8,000? We agonize over it. And then here, we just have a blanket $100,000 that we give. And that's not the process. That's not how we do this. This is an emergency fund that we're doing now, and it makes me uncomfortable giving any one organization this much money. It would make me happier if we were giving X amount and a little bit more to Second Harvest, or to the different groups that I know might need it. I know that that's going to suck up my staff time.
I still have your second, though, right? I still have your second?
You do.
Okay.
On the provision that it's really clear that this is one time, and in the future, they will go through the correct process to get the funding for the social services.
So you can't bind a future council later with a motion?
No, but we can say this is one time.
Well, it is a one time, unless we decide later to add more money to the fund.
You can have as many one times as you want.
So it's a set amount of money. So what is, it's not an ongoing obligation, it's a set amount of money that's being diverted. So in that sense, it is one time. Would take a secondary budget, would take, it would need to come back to council with another budget allocation for it to happen again.
Councilmember Nash?
May I have it? Okay, go ahead.
So I was going to go on a slightly different track, and that was, I actually am wondering whether council wants to discuss an urgency ordinance perhaps tomorrow to prohibit evictions from income loss due to the COVID-19 virus. San Jose is considering it tonight, so I was going to wait until we find out how that works.
Why don't we talk about that tomorrow? Because I'd be very curious to hear how, what the San Jose City Attorney says to the San Jose City Council about whether or not they have the authority to do that, and what the law is regarding that.
The only reason why I'm bringing it up tonight is we are meeting tomorrow, so we could bring an urgency ordinance perhaps tomorrow.
I'd talk about it tomorrow.
Yeah, I think that, I think...
Not to be your city attorney, but you'd have to add that to the agenda by a four-fifths vote tomorrow night. And frankly, I don't think we can turn it around that quickly.
All right. I mentioned it on Sunday, too. Eric.
We could add it as a discussion item. I don't know if we could have the ordinance in place.
It's fair.
Okay.
Could we please add it as a discussion item?
At the meeting. At the meeting, we have to notice it. But just as a calmer downer, that any tenant has to receive 60 days' notice, so we'll have sufficient time to process it.
Thank you. So are we ready to vote?
So as a clarification on that motion, so what you would like us to do is to amend the existing Resolution 6496, keep the $112,000 in that resolution, retitle it, include some declarations regarding the COVID-19 need for this additional funding assistance. And then the resolution attaches a guideline, which is in your packet, H111 through 13. And I think that, I assume that you are asking staff to update this guideline as well to incorporate the discussion here.
Same as last time. So last time, we asked for the professional recommendation, it came back, and then the council considered it and adopted it. So the same thing as last time would be, what criteria, we'll come back with the professional recommendation, which we may amend then, we may not, but then also the draft resolution. It's both attached together.
I agree. I think the professionals know what they need.
Is this a recommendation coming specifically from Samaritan House, or from our staff, or both?
The last time, what happened was they met together and agreed upon those criteria, and they were brought to us. So that would be the same thing that would happen this time.
And the guidelines that are in the current staff report, where those came directly from Samaritan House, or from staff, or from both?
That's from both.
Those came from both. We talked together and decided together that those were a good set of guidelines to bring forward.
Thank you. And Samaritan House started by a Menlo Park resident about 45 years ago, Ms. Cora Clemmons.
Clemmons, yes.
The motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next agenda item, H2. Introduction and First Reading of Ordinance 1067, Requiring Safe Storage of Firearms in Residences.
Kara Silver, interim city attorney, and I'll be presenting ordinance number 1067, the Safe Storage of Firearms Ordinance. So I'm going to briefly summarize the proposed ordinance, and then there have been some comments raised as to the penalty section of the ordinance, so we'll spend some time on that as well, and provide some alternatives for the council to consider. So in terms of the legal landscape, California state law requires that all firearms currently sold in California must be sold with a gun safe or a trigger lock. The loophole with this current state law is that the purchaser is not required to actually use the safety device. And so oftentimes, the safety device is just discarded and not used. So what some cities and counties have done is to adopt a law to close the loophole. This was started by San Francisco. They were the first city and county to adopt a model ordinance, and shortly followed by San Mateo County. So in San Mateo County, the ordinance was adopted to close this loophole, and they, San Mateo County also encouraged all of the cities within the county to also adopt the model ordinance. Not many cities have adopted the model ordinance as of right now, but there is still outreach encouraging cities to adopt the ordinance. So this council took up the issue about a month ago and directed us to draft an ordinance modeled after the San Mateo County ordinance. The operative provision in our ordinance, it states that no person shall keep a firearm in any residence unless the firearm is stored in a locked container or is disabled with a trigger lock. The exception for this, which is required to satisfy the Second Amendment, is that the, there is an exception if the firearm is carried on the person. In that case, obviously, a locked container or trigger lock is not required. The trigger lock under the San Mateo County ordinance, and in our proposed ordinance, contains, is defined to include a lock that is approved by the Department of Justice for a particular weapon. So there are particular safety locks that are designed to protect particular firearms. Here is a roster that is maintained by the Attorney General, and so you can look up exactly what type of safety device is paired with a particular firearm. So our existing ordinance, as I mentioned, is modeled after San Mateo County. The county ordinance has two sets of penalties. The first set, the first penalty is a criminal misdemeanor. A misdemeanor is punishable with six months in jail, or a $1,000 fine, or both. This is at the discretion of the judge. Most local ordinances are punishable as misdemeanors. It doesn't mean that they are actually taken to court and prosecuted, but there is a default provision in our local Menlo Park code that provides that all local ordinances are misdemeanors, except if the regulation itself classifies a viol- except if the regulation itself classifies a violation as an infraction. The other penalty provision that is provided in our local ordinance, again, following San Mateo County precedent, is a civil penalty of $100 a day for violation of this ordinance. So as I mentioned, there was a concern expressed by residents and people writing into CCN that raised a legitimate concern that the criminal misdemeanor penalty may not be equitable in all situations. In fact, it could, it could be too restrictive and would not really serve the purposes of the ordinance. So the, which is really public education. And so we looked at other options. As I mentioned, many, most of our ordinances are punishable as misdemeanors. You can also have an infraction. And as I mentioned, several of the code provisions in Menlo Park do contain an infraction as a penalty. And in Menlo Park, our infraction process is set up as a three-tier system. The first offense is $50. The second offense, as long as it occurs within a one-year period, is $200. The third offense is $500. And then upon the fourth offense in a single-year period, it can be charged as a misdemeanor. Other code provisions or other cities have what we call wobblers as a criminal penalty. So you can either, the DA has the discretion to charge it either as a misdemeanor or an infraction. So if you wanted to have some type of criminal penalty, you could, you could, instead of having it, all violations charged as a misdemeanor, you could decide to either limit it to an infraction, or you could charge, you could leave it to the discretion of the DA to charge it either as a misdemeanor or an infraction. And then finally, you have some discretion on whether to just completely eliminate a criminal penalty from the ordinance and just impose civil penalties. That's also an option for you. So tonight, we're, the recommendation is to give us some input on a penalty structure. This is a first reading. We can incorporate your recommendation into the final ordinance and then bring it back as a second reading for your adoption. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any clarifying questions from the council before we take public comment? Councilmember Nash?
You listed a number of cities who've also passed a similar ordinance based upon the San Mateo County ordinance. What penalties do they include?
So I'm aware of two cities, maybe three cities. Redwood City does have just an administrative penalty within its ordinance, within the fire safety ordinance or the gun safety ordinance. However, I believe their general process for just, for charging any violation as a misdemeanor would also apply, but I haven't been able to confirm that. So I'm not sure what Redwood City has done. Portola Valley followed the San Mateo County ordinance, and so they have it, they charge it either as a misdemeanor or a civil penalty of $100 a day. And then I believe Burlingame has also adopted this ordinance, and I, let's see, I can't recall what Burlingame has done, but I can look that up if you like.
Thank you. And then one other question. Do you know why the county chose to have a criminal penalty?
Well, it's very common. As I mentioned, the framing of a municipal code states at the very beginning that all violations of municipal code provisions are punishable as a misdemeanor. That's very standard language. All municipal codes have that. If you want to change it by reducing the penalty to an infraction or eliminating it altogether, you have to specifically call that out in an ordinance. And it's not commonly done. So that would be one reason. And I think the other, the other reason is that in terms of enforcement with this type of ordinance, in talking to the police department, what they said was that they don't specifically enforce for this particular ordinance. What would typically happen is if there was a crime, a pursuit or something like that going on, and they noticed in connection with that crime, a, you know, unlocked firearm, and there was an offense that was charged, then there would be, you know, two separate charges, the underlying crime and the unlocked firearm. And so they would have options for charging one or both of those violations.
Are there any other questions from council? So we'll move to public comment. Our first public speaker is Leigh Elkins.
Hi. I'm Leah Elkins. Can you hear me? So I just, I wanted to address some of the issues that the city attorney brought up regarding this, specifically the criminal penalties attached to this ordinance. Let me just introduce my friends back here. Paula Machocha is my neighbor and friend, and we started Moms Demand Action Group here in Menlo Park a few years ago. And we have quite a significant following. We have a monthly membership meeting, and some of our other Menlo Park members are here. We have some students from Menlo Atherton here as well, who are parts of the Students' Demand Action Group. And Moms Demand Action in California has been working across the state to get these safe storage ordinances passed. And let me just go to my notes. My notes, I've kind of gone off notes based on what Silver has said, because I just want to jump straight to the penalty issue. As an organization, equity is one of our top values, in addition to gun safety. And so we do not support criminal penalties for these types of violations because of the data that shows that they're most commonly enforced against minorities and communities of color, simply because those communities are more likely to come into contact with police. As she was saying, it comes up in a situation where there's a pursuit or there's a police call, police are called into the home, they see an unsecured firearm on the coffee table. Maybe there isn't even any other crime called, it's just, or charged, but it just happens that they are standing there in the home. They see that unsecured firearm, they charge it. And it's our position that jail time is simply too severe of a penalty in this situation. It's, you know, you can lose your job, you can lose your child custody, you could lose benefits. And it really, as was also mentioned, doesn't really serve the purpose of the ordinance, which is education, to teach people that these firearms should be locked up. And so we would ask that the council amend this proposed ordinance to remove criminal penalties and just make it a civil infraction with a fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. The next speaker is Michael Palmer. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, city council. I'm here to speak against this ordinance, and I'm amazed that we're going to pass a law that we're not going to enforce. You're going to impact on my civil rights, everyone's civil rights, for an ordinance that we're not going to enforce. An ordinance whose purpose is education. If it's education about gun ownership and handling guns, safe gun handling, there's plenty of opportunities to partner with organizations. Hate to say it, but the NRA is the best teacher on gun safety. It's taught upwards of 8 million California residents to handle firearms safely. And it's, I think the statistics prove out, in my letter, numerous statistics from CDC and others, that the incidence of accidents, which is why I assume we're talking about accidental injury and not crimes, is extremely low. And the numbers, I believe it's in the tens of thousands of 1%. So that's four or five decimal places down of the rate against the population. It's a problem that is nonexistent, despite the media, on accidental firearm injuries in this country and even in the state or in this county. There's no statistics from the police department. We wouldn't, if there's a problem with the number of gun owners in the state, we'd be seeing it in the newspaper every day that there is an issue. We don't see it. It's extremely rare. And the fact that 80, 8 million people with probably 40 million guns in this state can do this and have such a rare incidence of accidents, that's not, that's not an accident. They take the safety and responsibility seriously. More importantly, I think this runs counter to the Heller decision, and I suggest your attorney really needs to look at it again. And most importantly, you're getting involved in a private decision of each individual person decide how they are going to defend themselves beyond relying on our police department. Is it going to be a burglar alarm? Is it going to be a big scary dog? Is it going to be an attack cat? Baseball bat or just the scattered toys of the small family that will trip up anybody who tries to break in the house? Or if they make a decision to own a firearm, and then they make the next decision to keep one as self-defense. The ordinance itself is faulty, but, let me wrap it up. But when a gun owner decides to keep a firearm for self-defense, they go through an extensive list of questions they have to decide for themselves and look at their own situations. Who has access? I think we find that in most cases, they make the right decisions. If there's children, they lock it up. If there's people that can't be trusted or not trained, they lock it up. And the statistics bear out the fact because we're not seeing the problem. So the rest of it, I'll leave to my letter and would love to speak further about how this is faulty, faulty laws. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. The next public speaker is Paige Viotti.
Dear city council, it was April 4th, 2018, my freshman year at Menlo Atherton High School. I was in my Spanish class when the loudspeaker came on. I heard, "This is not a drill." I repeat, "This is not a drill." We all glanced around the room, afraid and in disbelief that this was actually happening to us. I hesitated at first, thinking, "No, this isn't real." But the look on my teacher's face and the hectic movement of students trying to take cover told me otherwise. I crouched underneath the cramped desk, thinking the inch-wide lengths of the table weren't going to do anything to save my life. I remember someone in the class grabbing a stapler and hovering by the door like that was going to save our lives, too. But that one brave student should never have to risk their life in order to save the lives of their peers. We sat under this cramped desk for two hours, oblivious of what was happening, until the loudspeaker came on once again, this time saying it was a false alarm. We were informed later that there was a photograph posted on social media depicting an MA student in possession of a firearm, but they were never actually on our campus. We were lucky. In school, we're taught how to barricade classroom doors, to get away from windows, to turn off the lights, and to remain silent. We're given ways to prepare or react to gun violence, but never how to prevent it. The proposed stricter gun law could change that in Menlo Park. If the newly enhanced safe storage laws are enforced, it could prevent shootings from happening in the first place. 80% of school shooters use a gun that they obtained from their home or of a relative. 15 other cities in California already have safe storage laws, and Menlo Park should be the next. We need this law to promote safety within the Menlo Park community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your public comment. The next speaker is Virginia Chang Corrali.
Councilmembers, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. As you know, I'm on the Menlo Park Fire Protection District Board and the San Mateo County Harvard District Board, but I'm here to speak as a public member and a private citizen. I totally hear what the Menlo Atherton students have to say, and I totally agree with their position. Because 40 years ago, there was an English teacher in Austin, Texas, who was shot. And that was my English teacher, with seventh and eighth graders. The school was on lockdown, and we didn't have texts or cell phones or, you know, pictures that you could take right away. So things were a lot slower to move along in terms of news. But the thing is, is that today, school shootings seem to be almost something that we're immune to and that we don't, we're not afraid of, or it's not as shocking. And, you know, for 40 years, at least my classmates have lived with this because there was, we didn't have the same resources we have today. So even 40 years later, we're talking about this. And I'm bringing this up to you today because Texas Monthly, finally, 40 years plus, it's like 41 years, is finally doing an article on this very situation. And all of these old wounds and all of these flashbacks are coming back because we've had to deal with, you know, fact-checking and talking to the reporters. But the bottom line is, what happened was, one of our classmates came down and shot our teacher. He was able to get his gun, his father's hunting rifles, from his father's cabinet without any restrictions. And, you know, Texas is a different state, I get that. Austin's a different city, I get that. But the issue is the same. And no one's trying to curtail the Second Amendment rights of people. But I think that this safe storage of firearms in residences could have, if they had an ordinance at that time, could have prevented something like this from happening. And so I hope that you will move forward with this. I don't know what the penalty is going to be. I hear the concerns, but I think you have to get past the penalty phase and just from a philosophical issue, or from a philosophical standpoint, move forward with safe storage of firearms in residences. I mean, 40 years later, we're wondering if that had been in place, would our English teachers still be alive? Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Ms. Herron, is that the last public speaker? Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions or comments from anyone on the council? Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so it's time to get in discussion and the nitty-gritty on it. So first off, I want to say I feel, I feel a little, I don't know what the word is, but I feel a little disappointed that Councilmember Combs isn't here this evening because this was his item that he brought to the council. So it's hard for me to move forward on it tonight without him being here. But I do think we can go ahead and do construction, and then we can talk about whether or not we move forward on it this evening, or we just wait to allow him to vote on it. The item tonight, for myself, I'm not interested in criminal at all. And I am a little confused, too, about the law. Just what does it mean when you say, if it's carried on the person? Is it the registered gun owner that's carrying it, or is it just any person carrying it? Or, well, the Second Amendment right and whether or not the person has it, I'm like, does that just sort of mean that if an accident happens with the gun, then they were carrying it within their Second Amendment rights? Or is it only the licensed gun owner?
Right. So it's, that particular phrase was inserted by San Francisco in order to address the Heller- Heller case that one of the public speakers mentioned. And so in the Heller case, the court found that you had a right to carry a gun on your person in your home to protect your, you know, your home and your family. But by providing that exception, any person that, or any person that is in the household would have the ability to use the gun if they were carrying it on, you know, on their person, if they were carrying it.
All right. So if a person then, so this, in this circumstance, then if a person, if there's an accident with a gun in the household, this ordinance wouldn't apply to them? Because presumably, if there's an accident with the gun in the household, the person's handling the gun.
Can I address that?
Well, I'm asking our attorney. Like, I'm just, I need to, well, this is what I'm trying to figure out. If a person is, if we're saying if it's carried on the person, so for instance, in our, because when we first brought this forward, I thought, wow, this is the only way that we're really going to hear about this, is that if there's a police entry on another issue, or if something really bad happens.
Yes.
And if something really bad happens where someone has fired a gun and caused someone to be hurt, whether it be themself or another person, I certainly don't want to do criminal in that circumstance. But I also, in light of the carried on the person, wonder if it's even applicable in that situation? Because if a child's handling a gun in their own home, does that fall within the carried on the person exception?
No, that wouldn't. So I think, I think it would apply to the registered gun owner then.
Okay. So it's only the registered gun owner that it applies to?
Right. Right.
So the parameters that I'd want to see this instituted then would be, I'd want to see a succession of fines within a year, but I would not want it to go up to a misdemeanor. And I think that's all the comment, that's all of really the instruction that was, or is there any other instruction you need from, for us to weigh in on, besides the amounts?
Right. So did you, did you want the fines to be an infraction, or did you want them to be civil penalties? So the difference would be, with an infraction, you would pay it to the court. A civil penalty, so it still is, infraction is still considered a criminal penalty, but you pay the, there's no jail time?
Right. I would want it to be a civil penalty to the city.
Okay.
So.
So the language for that option, I would suggest, is that any violation of this chapter may be prosecuted, or, I'm sorry, no, that's the wrong, any violation of this chapter shall only be punishable by a civil penalty of, and then, you know, whatever the amount is that you decide.
Okay. Does that work for you guys? Sometimes we just ask people if anyone has an objection. Yeah. Okay. My colleagues?
Councilmember, I mean, sorry, Councilmember Carlton?
Thank you. I agree with what you've said, but I just want to share the all-out myself. I also grew up, like Virginia, we grew up in Texas, and I grew up shooting guns. I grew up with my dad making me go through really strict training on safety. We kept all our guns locked up in a safe. The most dangerous weapon is an unloaded weapon. I mean, this was all part of my growing up. So I take this really seriously when we talk about doing this. So I called the DA, and I spoke to our DA about this. I spoke to gun owners about this. I spoke to our police chief Bertini about this. I even called the NRA to see what they had to say about it. I wanted to make sure that we were doing this thoughtfully. And I was worried, A, we absolutely have to make sure that we communicate this thoroughly to the people in the city, so that anybody with a gun knows that we now have a law that applies to them. B, I wanted to make sure that if somebody had grandpa's gun, they didn't suddenly have to pay an exceedingly large amount of money to buy a safe. And I found out that you can buy a lock, in most cases, for about $11. So I feel pretty good that we're not doing an excessive charge on someone that is beyond. I then looked into, if someone really feels the need to keep a gun by their bed, is that lock that's $11, how hard is it to get off? Well, actually, you can get a locking thing by your bed that you can push pretty easily that opens up in seconds. There are work around things. Is it ideal for anyone? No. We work together to find the best thing for society. One thing we found in being on council is that often the thing that irritates everyone is the best. And I, I don't think this is a bad thing to do. And to a point that was brought up before, there was a five-year-old boy, I'm told, a few years ago in East Palo Alto, and his parents, I don't, I don't know what happened. I don't know if his dad left it and went to the bathroom, or why, or how, but a five-year-old little boy picked up a gun and shot his two-year-old little sister. And that is just heartbreaking for everybody involved. So I've thought about this a lot, and I've spoken to a lot of people about it. And as I say, it's not something that I move forward on lightly, but I think that it's not an excessive thing to ask people to put locks on at this point in time. So I support what Councilmember Mueller put forward. But I just wanted to say, I did put thought into this.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
I'm curious what Chief Bertini said.
Chief Bertini told me about the little boy in East Palo Alto. No, I lie. It wasn't him. It was the DA that told me about it, because he said the heartbreaking thing was that they actually had to go through prosecution of the child. And I didn't ask how that worked out, but Bertini also felt it was good, that Bertini was talking about, there are also people that have guns stolen, and that is also an issue of tracing the gun. So both of them were in support of it.
Councilmember Nash, do you have a follow-up?
I'm also very much against the criminalization of it. I think that's a national issue, and we should not be criminalizing gun safety, storage. Thank you.
I've made a motion. Oh, you want to make your comment?
If I can.
Of course. I didn't see your light on.
I just wanted to follow up with that. I agree with the council, with their recommendations, and I'm actually glad that this is on our agenda. There's other aspects to gun violence that we haven't discussed. It is unfortunate that Vice Mayor Combs is not here, so that his perspective and the reason why he brought it to council could be heard. But at this point, we are going to move forward on this, and go ahead and vote.
Can I, can I give one direction? I know I said it, but I really want to make this a big point. We must make sure that we communicate laws that we make that might impact people.
Yes.
And that's maybe a separate conversation with staff, but to the point the gentleman made, let's not make a law that we're not going to then make sure people know about and enforce.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion, and then, but the three, the three fines in successive order as a civil, I think a civil penalty of 50, 200, and 500? Is that agreeable to you guys?
Absolutely.
50, 200, and 500 would be the fines?
50.
50, the first, 200 the second, 500 the third.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go ahead.
One additional question. Do you want to have a delayed implementation of the ordinance to allow for more public outreach? Typically, an ordinance would go into effect 30 days after second reading. If you did want some outreach, 30 days is a short period.
Any thoughts?
I think, I think we should put out a press release. I think we should talk about thoroughly doing this. I don't know what the standard is for when we do notice for new laws. As I said, I just want to make sure that someone isn't inadvertently unaware.
I personally don't have problems with the 30 days, and I'll tell you why. It's because I don't think this is going to be enforced that often. I think it's going to be in the rare circumstance that there's an officer entry, or in the circumstance that there's been something unfortunate happen.
But I would like to see a press release, or as much as we can, to make sure that people are aware.
I can make that part of the motion. All right. We're good?
Yes. The motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs absent.
That was the last item on the agenda. Thank you, Ms. Silver, for the presentation. And thank you to the high school students who came out and spoke. We really appreciate having our students here to express their opinions, their thoughts, and, most importantly, your experiences. And thank you to the parents that brought them. So what, the youth team is called, I can't see the, Students Demand Action. Okay. Thank you, Students that Demand Action, for being here. And this was our last item on the agenda, unless someone else has something they wanted to add. Our city manager, Starla Jerome-Robinson?
I just wanted to report out that we are going to have a council meeting tomorrow night at 5 o'clock, and we'll be updating the council on the COVID-19 situation and actions that the staff intends to take. So I just wanted to give it a little bit of public viewing.
Thank you.
I would just like to add on the city council agenda topics. I would like to request that we add a column to this report, which indicates whether the agenda item is responsive to council priorities, work plan, or business need of the organization.
Well, I'm going to respond in the same way I do each time, and that is, the council hasn't adopted their priorities yet, so when you do, we will.
But we could still add the column and have it indicate whether or not it's the 2019 priority and whether it's a business need.
I think we'd need to talk about that a little bit more. I don't think that we assume the pre-existing priorities are still the council's priorities at this point. Our assumption is the council's acted on the BHCCL and are in process for the new priorities.
Agree. I would assume that it would not be on the agenda if it wasn't relevant to, if it's on the agenda, it's got to have some relevancy, and I'm just, would like to indicate what that is.
Let's talk about this offline. Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.